It's 6:30. Yeah-hoo. It's 6:30 and I would like to call the meeting to order. Amazing crowd here, and I know we've got lots to do, so I would ask if you would all rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Christensen, here.
Mr. Pantera is not here this evening. Mrs. Greenberg?
Here.
Dr. Lim?
Here.
Ms. Wanny?
Here.
Next on the agenda is Approval of Agenda. Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, Cabinet, and guests. Item approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting, but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the Governing Board received the agenda, along with backup materials, at least 24 hours prior to the meeting, and have had time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the Governing Board may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. Any member of the audience who submitted a blue public comment card prior to the start of the meeting will be recognized to speak on that agenda item under Items for Approval. President Greenberg, I'd like to offer the agenda as posted.
Thank you. Prior to the meeting, we received two blue public comment cards, and each speaker will have three minutes to remark on a specific agenda item and will be recognized to speak under Items for Approval. And as a reminder, we ask that you always direct your comments to the board. Does any member of the Governing Board wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Anybody? Nope. Seeing none, Mrs. Christensen may have a motion to approve the meeting agenda and recommended consent agenda items?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Governing Board's Statements. Start on this side. Dr. Lim, do you have any statements?
I do. So I know we usually highlight what we've been doing, but I actually want to take a moment to highlight a few things that are coming up. So I know we're getting to the end of the year, and there's lots of recognitions that are coming. So there's three amazing opportunities that I'm fortunate to be invited to that I just want to highlight that are happening. So we have, first, in order of how they're coming. So we have the Volunteers in Paradise, which is a volunteer program here in PV to get people into our classrooms, helping out students. So the VIP Annual Recognition is just around the corner. That will highlight volunteers as part of that program and recognize them. Then we have the United Parent Council will be hosting their teacher and staff celebration, which is an amazing opportunity where actually our community comes together and nominates the staff and teachers who are going to be recognized at this celebration, and it is a huge to-do. But the one I'm most excited to attend is the Silver Anniversary and Retirement Celebration that is happening this year. And I just want to take a moment to highlight one of the teachers that I know will be recognized because she's retiring this year. So actually, back when I was in school, I graduated from Larkspur in 2000. So I aged myself a little bit, but it's been 25 years since I've been at Larkspur in 6th grade. But I happened to learn that Ms. Reimer is actually still a 6th grade teacher at Larkspur and was a 6th grade teacher long before I got to 6th grade. While she wasn't my teacher in 6th grade, I know many fellow classmates who their siblings had her as a 6th grade teacher. So she has been there for over 25 years. That is amazing. I'm going to see quite a few Larkspur staff retiring this upcoming year, many who have been at the school for 20-plus years. So it will be amazing to be at that opportunity and see teachers that actually taught me when we rotated. I was in Ms. Reimer's classroom for part of the day, getting us ready for middle school and changing classrooms. We had to go visit another 6th grade teacher to learn a subject and get used to traveling between classrooms. So I remember being in her classroom, and it's going to be amazing to see her retire this year. So all those amazing recognitions are coming up in the school year, and it's great to be sitting in this position as a former PVUSD alum.
Dr. Lim, I would just caution you, sometimes you retire, and then you come back.
Yeah, I've heard that's happened to quite a few people in this room, so warning to all of you who are thinking about retiring.
Thank you, Dr. Lim. Ms. Wanny?
Okay, I'll be brief. I just want to give a tremendous shout-out to the PVEA Prom Boutique. I think there might even be some people in here who were very heavily involved in starting the boutique way back when and who also have been giving so kindly and tremendously of their time and their energy. I had the privilege of volunteering there a couple of weekends ago. And for those who maybe don't know, the Prom Boutique is open to all students. It was prom season, we're right in the middle of it. We've had some of our high schools already send kiddos to prom and have a wonderful experience. And we got to see many of those students come in and try on all kinds of wonderful dresses and suits and ties galore, and the shoes. Oh my, the shoes. I might have tried some on to make sure that the sizes were correct. I swear, I left them all. I did not take them, though I wanted to. And I just want to remind everyone, there's, I think, one more day, Saturday, April 26, from 10:00 to 1:30 p.m. at Sweetwater Community School. So if you have a prom coming up, and I think Horizon still has their prom on Saturday, and I'm not sure if there are other schools left that still do, but please, it's open to everyone, and really, truly, it's incredible, from jewelry to shoes to just about anything you can think of. And it's just a heartwarming, wonderful opportunity to see our community really giving in that kind of a tremendous way that we can provide it for anyone who wants it, not just who need it, but who want to come in and not spend a ton of money on, you know, shoes they're never going to wear again or a dress that's going to sit there and hang. And remember, for those who have those dresses and suits and all this year, you can donate them for next year. So that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Wanny. Mrs. Christensen?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start out with a thank you to our wonderful Board Secretary, Deanne. As many of you know, there's a lot of different agenda items that we have to review and go through, and I've been having so many tech issues. She did this for me for just this one board meeting, so thank you to Deanne. And we just appreciate everything and you just always being there for not just the Board and the Superintendent, but just everybody in the whole district. So just thank you so much for just being amazing and being yourself. I'd like to welcome all the family members, staff, and community members that are here today. And for those of you that are celebrating Holy Week and Passover, Good Friday, upcoming Easter, I just wish you many blessings to you and your families.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen. I think everybody covered pretty much everything I was going to say, so rather than just repeat, I will say again, welcome. Thank you all. Lots of folks here, and I know we have lots to do. And so next on the agenda is Awards and Recognitions. Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board. Tonight, we're doing things a little different because we have the presentation of our permanent art collection. So we will stay up at the dais for the presentation of the art collection, and then after that, we'll go down for the rest of the awards and recognitions.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, members of Cabinet, and attendees both in-person and virtual. Tonight, we have several recognitions to share with you. This evening, we'll be beginning by introducing our Director of Fine Arts, Maureen Minnick, who's responsible for cultivating and overseeing the fine arts program here in Paradise. Please help me welcome Ms. Maureen Minnick.
Good evening. Third time's the charm. Art is one of the many offerings for students along their journey of excellence in PV schools. Not only does it foster creativity and critical thinking skills in the classroom, but it provides real-world application of those skills outside the classroom. Each year, the district purchases 12 pieces of student artwork out of thousands which are on display at our annual District Showcase, Sites and Sounds of PV Schools, which was held on March 1st earlier this year. These purchased pieces, which you'll see right here in a few minutes and are right here in front of us, are then professionally framed, and they are added to the district's permanent collection of artwork, where they will remain on display in the boardroom for three years. And then they rotate out among the halls and walls of our district campus for all to enjoy for years to come. Please join me and their teachers and their principals and their parents who are here tonight in congratulating these young artists. And I will call their name one at a time, and they will come up, find their art, and present it for all of you. So first up, we have Ani Baldwin, 6th grader from Quill Run Elementary School. Ani, feel free to actually walk all the way around. Yeah, awesome. Thank you. And now everybody knows what to do because Ani showed us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Lola Petzel, 6th grader from Mercury Mind Elementary School.
We should also add that if parents want to come up and get a closer, be closer for a picture, please come on up and do that.
Next up, we have Emma Sordahl, 6th grader from Boulder Creek Elementary School. Next up, we have Owen Sawinski, 5th grader from Desert Trails Elementary School. Next, we have Yessenia Aguirre, 8th grader from Shea Middle School. Next, we have Charlotte Falk, 8th grader from Sunrise Middle School. Next up is Leila Portugal, 7th grader from Desert Shadows Middle School. Leila's picture is almost as big as she is, which is amazing. And next, we have Anna Vackle, 7th grader from Mountain Trail Middle School. I had to get it right, Anna. Anna just flew here from Dallas from a soccer tournament, so... Yahira Carrillo Gonzalez, 12th grader from North Canyon High School. Make sure you go around and show everybody. Next up, we have Kate Hanson, 9th grader from Pinnacle High School. Next up, we have Natalie Trojio, 11th grader from Shadow Mountain High School. Our final one tonight, the student cannot be here, but we'd still like to present the art. This is Alexis Ren, 11th grader from Horizon High School. And as we finish up, I just wanted to thank our parents and families, and of course, shout-out to my lovely assistant, Brandy Monroe, who helped so much in getting this organized tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Minnick. Can we have the parents of these very fine, fine artists stand so we can recognize you as well, please? Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your students with us. And any of their teachers here, any of our art teachers? Stand up! Thank you so much, and I can't wait to see all of this art adorning our walls. Thank you. And with that, we have the rest of awards and recognitions.
Our next honoree has participated in the 2025 HOSA Future Healthcare Professionals Event, where several of our students won first-place 2025 HOSA and Skills Award. This recognition highlights their dedication and talent and the talent of these aspiring healthcare professionals. Congratulations to all of these HOSA participants and winners from Paradise Valley High School. Please welcome HOSA. If there's anyone from PVHS HOSA, if you could stand? This next student won two first-place awards in digital photography at the FBLA State Leadership Conference in Tucson, following a previous win at Regionals. Her success showcases her talent, dedication, and artistic creativity. And she is certainly an inspiration to others here in Paradise. Winning in the category of Digital Photography Professional Business Portraits and Digital Photography Commercial Photo Portfolio, please help me welcome from Pinnacle High School, Hannah Lakey. Our next recognition is the recipient of the Paradise Valley Education Association's Recognition of Professional Standard Award for Teachers. The honoree will be introduced this evening by Ms. Heather Schmidt, PVEA President.
I didn't do anything. Good evening, President Greenberg, Dr. Reynolds, Governing Board and Cabinet. My name is Heather Schmidt, and I am proud to serve as the President of the Paradise Valley Education Association. And my favorite part of every month is going out to a school and celebrating one of the amazing members, who is a teacher or an educator in our program, and give them their props, which stands for Professionals Recognizing Other Professional Successes. This month was especially fun because I got to crash a kindergarten classroom. Tonight, I'm honored to recognize Mariah Nolashea, a kindergarten teacher at Echo Mountain Primary, as the recipient of the April 2025 PVA Props Award. She was nominated by her colleague, Noelle Svetana. Ms. Svetana shared, in her short time at Echo Mountain Primary, Mariah has demonstrated that not only is she an extremely effective kindergarten teacher, but also shows leadership skills among her peers. She has volunteered to take on the role of Vice President of our Booster Club and enthusiastically participates in all of our family and community events. She is always attentive at school. Her classroom is engaging and ready for fun and learning. Accurate. She has a genuine enthusiasm for the subject matter she teaches and the process of helping students learn, not only during the regular school day, but also during after the bell. Mariah's understanding of students' challenges, both academic and personal, and creates a supportive, inclusive classroom environment that caters to the emotional well-being of her students in and out of the classroom. Mariah does wonders building trust in a rapport with students, fostering an atmosphere of respect and mutual understanding. The kiddos know that they can always come to her with any need. Personally, she is always a great colleague to work with. She is a go-to person for other teachers on campus to ask questions and seek support. Mariah is involved in most communities before and after school, wanting to make EMP the best place to be for students and faculty. Mariah exhibits qualities that make lasting impacts on our EMP students and community. She's always thinking outside the box on ways to make things better, consistently demonstrates professionalism and commitment to our community. Mariah's ability to collaborate with colleagues, her proactive approach to problem-solving, and dedication to student success are just a few things she does to stand out for this award. Congratulations, Ms. Nolashea. stand out for this award. Congratulations, Ms. Nolasia.
And that President Greenberg concludes this evening's awards and recognitions.
As we continue with the meeting, I want to point out there are plenty of seats up front now. Come on down. All right, we're going to get back to our agenda. And next on the agenda is Superintendent's comments, Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board. In PV schools, we engage, inspire, and nurture students through high-quality instruction, meaningful educational opportunities, and dynamic learning experiences. These experiences are made possible by the dedication of our staff and volunteers. In April, we celebrate Bus Driver Appreciation Day on April 22nd, Administrative Professionals Day on April 23rd, and all next week, we celebrate the many volunteers who help support our school system as part of National Volunteer Week. To our bus drivers, thank you for your continued dedication and support of our students. Our administrative professionals, thank you for all you do to help our organization run smoothly. And to our volunteers, our many, many, many volunteers, thank you for donating your time toward the success of students here in PV schools. By the way, to drive a bus, support our organization, or volunteer your time in Paradise, please visit www.pvschools.net. PV Schools wants to encourage you to explore the many journeys of excellence offered within our gifted program. Join us on May 8th from 5:30 to 7:30 at Paradise Valley High School for the annual Gifted Showcase. This special event will showcase end-of-the-year projects our gifted students have worked diligently to research and create over these past few months. It's a memorable way for our students and teachers to wrap up the school year. For more information, please contact your child's school or our gifted department. And last but not least, don't forget to check your inbox. Every spring, PV School sends out a satisfaction survey to better understand how parents and guardians perceive their child's school. Your feedback on areas such as academic support, communication, and school climate is invaluable in helping us continue to improve and empower every learner for a lifetime of success. The survey link was sent to our parent and guardian email addresses this afternoon and will be accepting feedback through the survey until April 25th. President Greenberg, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reynolds. Now we move to items for approval. And next on the agenda is consideration approval of administrative employment personnel actions. I'll turn it over to Dr. Holmes.
Madam President, members of the board, Stacy Alejo is currently the Behavioral Specialist at Greenway Middle School. She earned a Bachelor of Arts in Secondary Education from ASU and a Master of Arts in Administrative Leadership from NAU. If approved, she will receive salary and benefits in accordance with the PvP bargaining agreement, and we recommend you approve Ms. Alejo to be the next Assistant Principal at Greenway Middle School.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Stacy Alejo for the position of Assistant Principal at Greenway Middle School as presented? Mrs. Christensen?
So moved.
Does any board member have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Ms. Alejo!
Do you have any family you would like to introduce?
I have my green, my family, but my kids go to sleep really early. We go celebrate in the morning.
Sounds like a plan. Congratulations.
Love the shirts, by the way. Good job, Greenway Middle.
Next up, Dr. Jeffrey Fensel is currently the interim Assistant Principal at Greenway Middle School. Thank you, I needed that. He earned a Bachelor of Science, oh my gosh, in journalism. That's what I... He earned a Bachelor of Science in Journalism, Master of Arts in Secondary Education, and a PhD in Educational Leadership. If approved, you will receive salary and benefits consistent with the PvP bargaining agreement, and we recommend you approve Dr. Fensel to be the next Assistant Principal at Sunrise Middle School.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Dr. Jeffrey Fensel for the position of Assistant Principal of Sunrise Middle School as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Do you have any family to intro?
Yes, I do want to thank you, President Greenberg, Dr. Reynolds, Governing Board and Cabinet. Just fantastically supportive faces, and I appreciate all of you, not just today, but every day. Mr. O and the Greenway family, fabulous year. It's not over yet. So thank you to you guys. PvP, my fantastic administrators I work with and lean on. And of course, my wonderful wife, Michelle, who's the backbone of our family. Our Horizon Husky freshman, Madison, is here. And I will make him watch, but we have to go pick him up from soccer practice now. Grayson, who's a Sam Piper 6th grader. So thank you.
And finally this evening, Ernesto Mesa is currently the Acting Director of Transportation. He has 41 years of experience working in public schools, mostly in the areas of maintenance and transportation. His career experiences include experiences in Murphy Elementary School District, Pendergast Elementary School District, Isaac Elementary School District, and Deer Valley Unified School District. He is also a past president of the Arizona Association of School Business Officials. So if that sounds like maybe he's well-known and well-regarded around the valley, yes, that's what I'm conveying. He has done tremendous work for us these past few weeks, and we're very grateful for your time. If approved, he will receive salary and benefits in accordance with the COA bargaining agreement, and we recommend that you approve Mr. Mesa to be the Interim Director of Transportation.
Thank you. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Ernesto Mesa for the position of Interim Director of Transportation as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
You have to introduce your wife, too. Okay. Next on the agenda is consideration approval of changes and/or additions to the bargaining agreements with PVEA, PVSEA, ESS, PvP, COA, and Cabinet for 2025-26. Dr. Holmes.
Madam President, members of the board, we are asking your approval this evening for the bargaining agreements for the 2025-26 school year, specifically for Paradise Valley Education Association, Paradise Valley Support Employees Association, Executive Support Staff, Paradise Valley Principals, Central Office Administrators, and Cabinet. The majority, I will share as a brief summary, the vast majority of the changes are all in the area of compensation. I'm very pleased to tell you that for each of the groups, we were able to provide a minimum of 3% for all employees, which is incredible, especially in light of the last few years. Special thank you to Ms. Jill Barrigan and her team for finding us the ability to do that. We recommend your approval.
Thank you. We have two comment cards. So first, I would like to call Heather Schmidt.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself. Good evening, President Greenberg, Dr. Reynolds, Governing Board and Cabinet, Heather Schmidt, President of the Paradise Valley Education Association. This might be the funnest thing I get to do all year. Tonight, I have the pleasure of addressing you all regarding the Certified Bargaining Agreement for the 25-26 school year. Every year, members of the PVEA bargaining team work hard to gauge the interests of the certified group and use that data to bring information and stories to the bargaining table. First, I'd like to thank the other six members of my bargaining team, Debbie Arnn from Sonoran Sky, Josh Atkins from Greenway, Chrissy Bonifosi Hughes from Pinnacle High School, Chris Howard from PV High School, Dr. Karen Hudson from Mountain Trails Middle School, and Stacia Stoffey from Mountain Trails Middle School, for the time and work that they have put in to ensure that we come up with the results from bargaining that met the interests of our certified group. This team, with the support from the Paradise Valley Education Association Executive Board, has invested countless hours over the last six months since we sent out our bargaining survey in October of 2024. Over the last six months, we've collaborated with members of district leadership to generate numerous options for the team to discuss and reach consensus on. I'd also like to thank Dr. Holmes, Mrs. Barrigan, Ms. Deek, Mr. Hubbell, Ms. Jarris, and Mr. Dennis for the time that they gave to the important work that we do at the bargaining table. Interest-based negotiations, or IBN, is not always easy, but allows for open dialogue and creative solutions. As you review the draft version of the 25-26 Certified Bargaining Agreement, I am extremely excited about the results of our work. This agreement adds 2.5% to every certified base salary, an additional $1,050 to the base salary from Classroom Site Fund, and a 10% increase to our Priority Service Credit, which addresses longevity. It also increases or adds addenda to support the various things that certified educators do outside of the professional day. Includes a specific plan as well for student supervision before and after school that also maintains our duty-free day. This averages out to an overall increase of approximately 4.5% for the certified group. Not only that, our brand-new teacher starting salary for next year will be $50,000, which I know that there are current and former governing board members that have been talking about this since I started paying attention to governing board meetings. This agreement was ratified by the members of PVEA by a rate of 95.5%, one of the highest percentages of ratification we have seen in recent years. As you vote yes on the six agreements before you this evening, I want to thank you all for continuing to value the partnership between PVEA and the district. This is a truly special part of working in Paradise, and as we begin winding down the 24-25 school year, it is my absolute honor to continue leading PVEA next year. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a card from Michelle Courtwright.
My name is Michelle Courtwright, and I am the President at the Paradise Valleys Support Employee Association. President Greenberg, excuse me, Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds and Cabinet, it is with great pleasure that I let you know that our group also ratified at 95%. But the first thing I want to do is to thank Dr. Reynolds and Cabinet for understanding the importance of finding funds for our ESPs and making sure that their insurance stayed at the same level it was last year. That is huge. Most people that know me know this is my favorite thing to do. I love the process we have in this district and the fact that we are one of the few districts in the state where ESPs have a voice that is just as important as any other stakeholder group. And this year was my last bargaining session. And I'm going to be sad to go, but I can honestly say that this was one of the best years that we have had. It didn't come with some hiccups. I mean, there were times where I was getting emojis from my group saying breathe, but I really believe that part of this was from both sides, from the leadership, from Dr. Martin and her team. They were amazing. They looked at us as people. They helped us find our interest. We helped them find their interest, and we did that. This year, we were able to do quite a few things. We gave every employee that currently works for us a minimum of a 3% increase. There was no increase to their insurance. We also were able to look at those hard-to-fill positions, the ones that have very high vacancy rates, and we moved them, some of them by $2 and $3 an hour. We looked at internal equity. If you drove in one department, you now make the same as if you drove in another department. So we looked at that internal equity. We put into place that next year, we go back to a three-year rotation, so every employee in this district knows every three years, we're going to look at them to see, are we competitive? We did something that is near and dear to my heart. When I first started, reimbursement for professional growth to go to college was about $200. Can't even buy a book for that. This year, it's $1,500. So if you do this right, you can have a degree and move up and make a profession in this district. We increased longevity. We made sure that we had mentor and training programs. We did wonderful things this year, and we could not have done it without the help from both sides, finding the interests of everyone. And I want to thank you and ask you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. This one time, I would say any board member wishing to make a comment. We're going to do this as a roll call vote, so if anybody does and they want to do it during that time. But does anybody want to make a comment outside of that? Mrs. Christensen?
I would like to thank both the PVEA and PSCEA Presidents for those comments. We don't, as governing board members, while we have approval, we don't get to hear all of the stories. And so that really spoke to my heart to hear that and that how we are really fighting for our staff members. So I appreciate that. And I kind of joke, this is one of my favorite things to spend money on, because you know I'm very fiscally responsible. So I really appreciate Mrs. Barrigan finding those funds to be able to give our staff members the increases they deserve. So thank you all.
Does anybody else? Dr. Lim?
Yeah, so I just wanted to take a moment. There were a few things that jumped out at me that were really great to see, and I know Heather's already highlighted that, but that starting base salary, knowing where I started in my field so many years ago and know that, you know, that base salary really makes a difference on whether you apply to a job. That is an amazing base salary to start in education. So to see that number for our... So to see that number for our teachers and our certified educators was amazing. So amazing to find the space to be able to do that and to make that a base salary that gets to stay permanent. That was a great thing to see. And then I also was going through all the ESPs that have jumped in the many different categories, seeing multi $2, $3 increases and seeing that they are some of our hardest to fill, including a number of ones in transportation, which we know we desperately need more staff in transportation. So to see those salaries go up and know that we're competitive with the surrounding districts for those positions will see us increase employment in that space and hopefully help relieve some of the burden in some of those staff areas where people are doing a lot of work in those spaces. So it was great to see all the work that was done and have to go through a very lengthy document to see all the amazing work that took place through that joint bargaining process.
Ms. Wani?
So I just want to, first and foremost, you know, thank you to all of the bargaining groups. And I can't even, I mean, I was, I mean, I couldn't help myself. I mean, I did, I looked at every single one of the agreements and every link and every... And I'm just, the amount of work, because that was a lot of work to go through it. I can't even imagine the amount of work that you all and the district put into very intentionally thinking through all of these different pieces and all these different moving parts, right? Because we all want more money. It's important, right? Teachers deserve money. And then there's also all these other moving parts and pieces that become part of your work-life balance, right? What makes it special to be here, right? And how you all listen to each other and you reach out to everyone, regardless of whether they're a member or not, everyone has that opportunity. I learned that. And so I'm just, I'm really proud of the work you all have done. I'm really grateful that we have processes here in this district that allow for those voices to be heard, because in my opinion, that's how we get the best outcomes, when we listen and people have an opportunity to participate in these processes. So yay to this district for that. And I mean, I think we'll just keep trying to find all the money all the time, and I'm just so grateful to everyone. It's a really positive moment, and all of your, and leadership all around the board really just shines. So thank you to all of you.
I'm actually a little fur-clumped here. As Heather pointed out, this is something we've tried incredibly hard over the years. And certainly, some years, we've been more successful than others, and it's exciting that this is one of them. I want to thank everybody who's been involved. This is, you know, as far as, we are kept informed, but I must say that things probably went smoother than I've seen in many other times, because we weren't contacted all that much about what this might be going on. But I know over the years, we've seen, you know, certain times where we have been able to, you know, we've gotten perhaps greater support from downtown. You know, again, I think, though, that usually comes after we all rise up and remind folks the importance of public education and that, quite honestly, money is always part of that. But I think lately, it has been much more difficult. When I first found out this is what we are going to be able to do this year, I got more than a little fur-clumped. And I'm just really excited that this is what we're getting to do and that so many of our employees, as evidenced by that 95-plus percent, agree that PV is the place to be, and I hope we can continue doing this. And before I pass out and actually start crying, Ms. Chisman, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Christensen?
Yay.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Absolutely, aye.
Dr. Lim?
Aye.
Ms. Wani?
Aye.
Thank you. This has passed unanimously. And I think Dr. Reynolds wants to weigh in.
Thank you, President Greenberg. Just a couple of thoughts. As you, as we reflect on this process and we reflect on how we do this in PV. First of all, I want to say thank you for your comments about the process, because this is a very unique process to PV. And it is something that is honored. It's a tradition. It's valuable. And we want to make sure that we never take that for granted, because every employee group has a voice. Every employee group gets to participate in this process, and it makes me really proud to be back and be part of that. The second thing is, just quickly, and this is not as positive, but I do want to say that the money was found because of some very difficult decisions and hard work that went in last year in rightsizing, continuing to right-size our district and closing schools. And so we're able to do some of these amazing things due to the savings that we realized with that. Having said that, as we continue to face the challenge of declining enrollment and we look to the future, more decisions are going to be, need to be made in order for us to be able to do this amazing work, do these amazing things, and compensate all of our employees in a competitive way. So thank you to all the bargaining groups. Thank you to the team, Dr. Holmes, Ms. Barrigan, all of our administrators that were involved, all of our teachers, our staff members. It is a wonderful process, and the outcome this year is just absolutely fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Next on the agenda is consideration approval of changes and/or additions to the contracts for continuing probationary certified teachers, ESP, ESS, ESP-exempt principals, and administration for 2025-26. Dr. Holmes.
Madam President, members of the Board, we're asking for your approval of the contract templates for the 2025-26 school year, as you've just summarized. There are no major changes other than dates to the contracts. We recommend your approval.
Thank you. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the changes and/or additions to the contracts for continuing probationary certified teachers, ESP, ESS, ESP-exempt principals, and administration for 2025-26 as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment? Seeing none, we will do this one by roll call vote as well. Ms. Chisman?
Mrs. Christensen?
Aye.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Aye.
Dr. Lim?
Aye.
Ms. Wani?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, we thinned out a little bit there. Next on the agenda is consideration approval of the 2025-26 Performance-Based Pay, or PBP, plan for certificated staff. Dr. Holmes?
Madam President, members of the Board, for consideration this evening, the Performance-Based Pay Plan for certificated staff for the 2025-26 school year. There's just one small change regarding how opportunities for hours are created in this plan. Otherwise, the changes are basically dates. We recommend your approval.
Thank you. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the 2025-26 Performance-Based Pay Plan for certificated staff as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration and approval of Resolution Number 573, a property lease agreement between Paradise Valley Unified School District and Austin Centers for Exceptional Students, Inc., or ACES. Mrs. Barrigan?
Thank you, President Greenberg, Dr. Reynolds, and Governing Board. Our proposed lease agreement with the ACES is to take place on the Air Libre campus. They are currently, ACES is currently at the Choya Annex, which is across from Road Runner. And this will be a three-year phased-in lease agreement. Currently, with the portion that they rent at the Choya Annex, we receive about $216,000 in rent from them annually. With this new lease, in the first year, that will increase to $600,000 approximately annually, almost an increase of $400,000. And then by the third final phased-in year of the lease with the Air Libre property, that rental will go up to $900,000 a year, which is almost a $700,000 increase. And then there is an inflationary factor in that lease, so as we experience inflation, we annually include that in the lease. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barrigan. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve Resolution Number 573, a property lease agreement between Paradise Valley Unified School District and Austin Centers for Exceptional Students as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member have any questions or comments? Ms. Wani?
So this, I think, is wonderful. I guess the only question I really have is, could you speak to, you know, what sort of process you foresee or considerations for, I mean, obviously, we need, again, the theme. We need lots of money. We need our state to give us more money. We need, right? And I appreciate all the hard work everybody is doing here with what we have and the efforts, right, to be, you know, have regular revenue coming in whenever we can. So have you had an opportunity or their thoughts about just evaluating, okay, now we have this increase in funds, how will they be spent? We know that we have at least, you know, set plan, a set schedule for those revenues. Just kind of wondering how that is going to be discussed and talked about in the future.
Yes, that is a great question, Mrs. Wani. So I will never spend a dollar before we receive that dollar. However, yes, I have thought about ways we could use that. Generally, what we do with this, because of the fund that it goes into, it can be used for maintenance and operation types, type purposes. And so the likely use will be to move some salaries that are currently in MNO, likely out of the facilities department, into that fund, and then that frees up a little bit more money in MNO for other things moving forward.
Okay, and is there, is that sort of just an internal, kind of when you're doing budgeting and things like that? Or just kind of, just more money now for you to sort of be working with?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Christensen?
Thank you. I had a question, and I apologize. Because of the technical problems I was having, I had to read everything in print last night, so I didn't quite get to every little detail. I was just wondering if there's any contingency plans? If the, if they decide, if ACES decides to end the contract. I didn't see in here what the contingency plans, or if, say, for some reason, they can't afford the increase as it starts, especially when it gets to the 900K, what is the process? And I just want to know a little bit about it.
Yeah, so Mrs. Christensen, there is a section of the lease that allows termination on either part, and I believe they have to give 18 months' notice, although I'm doubting that now, and it might be two years. So somewhere between 18, they have to give sufficient notice to us. And so we would have quite a bit of time to determine what we would want to do with that. If they stop paying rent for some reason and they can't afford it, we have the ability to terminate that lease for a different type of cause and can exit them quickly. What I know about their finances, they should be able to afford even the $900,000 without question. They rent from other districts in the valley as well. They have for many, many years. They've always paid on time. They're very good tenants, and their board has already approved this lease agreement. Thank you for the questions.
Can we lease more things to them? I'm just kidding.
Maybe in the future, if they want more space.
I like that answer, so thank you, Mrs. Barrigan.
Does anybody else? Dr. Lim?
So I'm hoping you could speak a little bit. I know they're already on a campus. Can you talk a little bit about, by moving to a new campus, what they're gaining? Is it space? Is it, what are they gaining by coming to a different space besides paying us more money?
Significantly more space. So it's, the Choya Annex is very, very small. The square, the amounts are based off the square footage, so we charge a per-square-footage amount annualized. So that, the increase in the rent is coming from increased space. They need more space. When they have more space, they have more students, and they make money by each student that they have. So then they can pay us the rent they need to pay us.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Happy to say the motion passes unanimously, and thank you for this excellent lease. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, I have to turn a page here, is district administration requests that the governing board delegate authority to execute the requested assurances and submit to the Arizona Department of Education's grant management system to avoid any freeze on PVUSD federal funding. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board. As you are aware, districts across the state of Arizona and the nation have been asked to sign a letter of assurance that we, by the Federal Department of Education. The letter talks about our understanding that as we receive federal funding, we are acknowledging that we are in compliance of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 that prohibits discrimination based on race, color, or national origin. We have always complied with Title VI, and so the board should be confident that we can sign this letter. But over the past few weeks and months, we have also received direction from the County Superintendent and Department of Arizona Department of Education regarding the use of terms like diversity, equity, and inclusion. And since that direction was received, we have undergone an analysis of the systems that we have in place. Because of the lack of clarity on what is actually meant by diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's been somewhat challenging, but we completed that review, and I've been assured by Cabinet that, to the best of our understanding, we are in compliance. It is important to note that this is a bit of a moving target as we figure out what these expectations are. But as more clarification is provided to us, we do have a process in place to continuously review our systems, and we have a process in place for stakeholders to share their concerns with us for review, which, as always, we will take seriously. The second letter is regarding the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, PERPA. Of course, in PV schools, we are very proud of the partnership we have with parents and the systems we have in place to protect student information. Our student services team has done a review of our practices, and we are confident we are in compliance. But we will also continue to monitor and review to ensure that that remains the same into the future. I recommend that the board delegate the authority to the superintendent to execute on these two letters of assurance.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion? I can't believe I have to read this again. May I please have a motion to delegate authority to the superintendent to execute the requests for certification and assurances issued by the Arizona Department of Education pertaining to compliance with the requirements of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, and the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment in order to preserve eligibility for federal grant funding as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member have any questions or comments? Mrs. Christensen?
Yes, thank you. I was just curious about who determines whether or not we're in compliance. I did hear the County Superintendent's Office as well as the Arizona Department of Education. And given that there's different definitions, as Superintendent Reynolds has stated, we may feel we're in compliance, but who ultimately decides that? And is there an audit process?
Well, as we, the act this evening is based on the work that we've done, right, to assure that, as to the best of our understanding, on what we understand the expectations to be. I think over the next few weeks and months, we'll continue to get further direction from the Department of Education, you know, as we work through that. At the end of the day, it would be the Department of Education and the Arizona Department of Education.
And I did get clarification from Ms. Barrigan. We currently have a, I'm going to round up for the fiscal year 2025, about $20 million in federal funds. So if it's determined that we are not fully in compliance, does that mean that that whole amount would be revoked? Or, because it's my understanding that there are some districts around the country, and I think in Arizona, that did get federal funding pulled. I just want to ensure that we don't get any funds pulled from the federal government.
So we're confident, right, that that's not going to happen? But when, we have very little clarification around what this process will look like. As you imagine, it's a nation- As you imagine, it's a nationwide process. But we'll, we will continue to monitor and adjust and make sure that as additional information, as additional clarifications come out, we'll continue to, to ensure that we are in compliance.
My last question is, we, we discussed the, we didn't discuss anything about Title IX in this either. We, we're, this agenda item is six only. So on Title VI, does that include any, any language that is on our website? Because I did see that we have been cleaning up some of the language from, from previous executive orders that, that the president has stated on removing language like diversity, equity, inclusion from, from district documents and websites. Is that a separate item that we're going to look at later? Or, or we're not discussing that? I just want clarification.
I'm not sure I understand the question. So do we, are you asking it in our website? Do we, do we talk about Title VI?
I'm wondering if the previous executive order from President Trump on removing language that addressed diversity, equity, inclusion in all schools is included in any of this? Or is that a separate item? Because I just, I just want to make sure we don't get any funds pulled from our district.
I would say that I think it is intertwined. But we, as I mentioned, we have received direction from multiple sources, which makes it challenging, right? But, but we have done a review of that. You've noticed, right? We've, we've made a few tweaks and changes just to make sure that the language we are using accurately reflects what it is we are doing. And so we, we have completed that process and will continue to do so.
Ms. Wani?
Okay, so I have a, I have a couple of questions. My understanding, and I, please correct me if I'm not accurate, is that there's, there's, there's current litigation right now regarding the legality so of these certifications orders. So if, so I guess my, my first question is, I mean, I'm assuming we're keeping an eye on that and what's going on. And whatever guidance ultimately comes out of that litigation, hopefully, we get some more clarity and will continue to be updated.
Yeah, I, I would expect that, I mean, I, I'm not an expert in the law. But I would expect that as we work, work through this process, I can't guarantee that any of that will be resolved before these, the deadlines for these.
When is the deadline?
April 30th. April 24th for the federal government and April 30th for the Department, Arizona Department of Education.
Okay, so in, okay. So we may or may not have additional legal guidance before that. However, if, if we do get additional guidance, it's going to be taken into consideration and we'll, we'll get some of those updates?
I would expect so, yes. Are you talking about the governing board will get those updates?
Yes.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Okay. In order to use and continue to have access to federal funds before this year, right? Prior years, other administrations, whatever. You, was there some sort of certification process that you, that the district needed to sign on to?
Yeah, there are a variety of assurances that, that we, that we submit in order to receive funding in, in a variety of sources. I will look to Ms. Barrigan if I'm.
You're correct. Dr. Reynolds, the main one is the general statement of assurance that the superintendent is required to sign annually. So my, they've essentially used a similar process in order to do these.
Okay. And so you said, you know, you, you, as a result of, you know, you, you've got these requests for certifications that maybe are a little bit different than, but you're, you're used to this sort of practice? Is that's what I'm getting at?
Yes.
And so as a, as a result of that, reviewed processes, reviewed language, made sure, you know, we're in compliance with federal law as we know and understand and are getting guidance by council, federal law to be? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just bear with me, I have to work through these things, you know? Okay, so if I could ask, and you did speak to, you know, making sure that our language is clear, accurate, and is, says what it should say, says what it is that we're doing. With, I'm all about being, right, using specific language. Other than that, how, as a result of the systemic review and processes, have, have there been changes? As a result of, of this review that you, you know, are, have been engaged in?
Changes to, to language?
Other than language, processes or?
No, we did not identify any.
Identify anything that you felt did not comply?
That's right.
Okay, so I, and, and what, part of why I ask this is, right, because language is important, right? And I, I want to try to convey as much as we can to, if you're, if you're a parent, if you're a student, if you're a teacher in our district and you're uncertain about what all of this means, I think we all are, right? I think, I think everyone kind of is. And, and we're going to hopefully learn more and be really transparent about that as we learn more. But if you are, if you are a part of our community, can we, can we convey to them? I guess, I guess this is a question, so what I'm, all these questions are kind of getting at here, that they don't have to be concerned that something all of a sudden is going to change for them? Like that they're, that we've not identified practices through this process that now are going to change? We, we were in compliance with the law. We still are in compliance with the law. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and I'm just going to double check with our cabinet, making sure that they're all nodding yes. But yes, we, we have not identified anything substantial that we need to change in our practice. We have, we have always worked to comply with the law, and we will continue to work to comply with the law.
Okay, and if, if there are students, parents, teachers out in our community who, for whatever, whatever reason, right? Personal to them, value, experience, if they needed or wanted to find more information out or had a question with regard to how could, how might this impact me, right? Where would we, where would you suggest that they take those questions to?
Well, we, we always recommend that, you know, if they have concerns, you know, they, that you're talking about, talk with their, their building principal, right? That the building principals are a wonderful resource that then can guide a family, you know, if, if they need additional support, additional resources.
Thank you for bearing through all that with me.
Thank you. Dr. Lim?
So I think we've covered a lot of the language and processes questions. My question is more about the effort that went into doing this. So we had a very short timeline. We were in the middle of many big things like bargaining, superintendent search, number of key things that were taking a lot of personnel time in our district alone. Can you talk a little bit about the efforts that were made? And like, kind of this, this was a whole department, multiple departments working? Like, what was the effort that went into making sure we are compliant?
So, yeah, I mean, we, we essentially reviewed all of our systems to make sure. So whether it's our hiring practices, whether it's our financial, right, department, we worked through the strategic plan and the website. Our Student Services Department have looked through, you know, how, just making sure that, that we're doing everything we're supposed to do when it comes to FERPA and how we communicate with families. You know, we are a district that has, has taken that very, very seriously. And so, but it, it takes, right? It takes time to go through all of those different things. And, and we'll continue to take time as we need to continue to communicate to our administrators across the district, to our, our teachers and staff across the district, to make sure they also understand what it is that we continue to do. So it, the, the work is certainly not done. And, and we have a, we have a, a plan in place to continue to make sure that we remain in compliance. And, and as new information comes, as clarification comes out, if there are any, you know, legal processes that are out there that may come to a resolution and we get new information. But yes, it takes a lot of time to be able to adjust and, and make sure that we're, we're doing the very best for our students.
Great, thank you.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for doing all of that. It, it has been very extensive. I know Dr. Reynolds and I have had multiple conversations about this piece and, you know, what it means in terms of, I mean, we do have to do assurances all the time. We have, basically have to say, yes, we are doing what we are supposed to do. And legally, this is one of those things. I, I think, you know, there are just still multiple question marks out there. And I think we're all going to navigate this as, as some of those questions come. You know, perhaps we get either greater clarity or they, they, you know, they simply come and, and it's just one more piece that, that we will review and ensure that we are in compliance. And I hope that those are few and far between.
And I want, want to make sure the board knows as well, right? This will be a significant portion of the, the transition plan. Because I'm signing these letters today, but I won't be here on July 1, right? And so in that transition plan to Dr. Cummings, that'll be, that'll be part of that discussion as well. And you know where to find me.
We do know where to find it. But I also want to point out that it is, it is important that we provide this authority so that when Dr. Reynolds is no longer an employee, he is still legally protected should there be any issues. And I, and I, that truly is something we need to do.
No, thank you for that. And also that our staff, right, that we are, as a board, right? You're, yeah, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Next, and I should say last, on the approval agenda is gifts and donations. I'd like to review just a few that came in. Desert Shadows Elementary School PTA donated, noncash, but donated over $2,000 for Edison Robots EdPac, 40 robots for their STEAM program, and over $4,300. So actually, a total of just over $6,400. The second one was for Two Maker Bot Sketch Sprint 3D Classroom Bundle for their STEAM programs. So awesome, Desert Shadows PTA. At Echo Mountain Intermediate, Dorito Partners donated $1,000 for the rewards for students. And the Pinnacle Peak Preparatory School PTO donated $15,581.09 for the AV system for the multipurpose room. We appreciate those donations and all of the donations. And if you're here, thank you. If you know anyone who's on the list, please thank them for us. Mrs. Christensen, may I have a motion to accept the gifts and donations, please?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Next, we actually have no call to the public. So I think we can move right to discussions, items for discussion. And next is the presentation of the Paradise Valley Unified School District Classroom Spending Report for 2024, I presume. I turn it to Mrs. Barrigan. Mrs. Barrigan?
Thank you, President Greenberg, Dr. Reynolds, and governing board members. As I wait for the presentation to come to the screen, preferably large so I can see it, I will let you know that the 2024 Information for Classroom Spending Report is now available. It was available to us at the end of March. And while it does have a lot of good pieces of information on there, I would just remind everybody, this is a very small portion of the actual data that we have here in a school district. And these are, are points that the Auditor General provides as some reference. But we have lots of other data. If anybody's ever interested, come on by. People rarely take me upon that. Okay. So starting with the spending by operational area, the famous pie chart that is put together. We have it split into two sections now on that report. They have the classroom spending, which includes instruction, student support, and instruction support, mainly because all of those things generally happen in the classroom. And so they've split that portion out, with the rest of it being the non-classroom spending portions, including administration, plant operations, food service, and transportation. So you see here each of those percentages by the operational area with total percentages by classroom spending and then non-classroom spending. Just as a reminder, those instructional expenses include things, mostly personnel-related expenditures, salaries and benefits for teachers, paraprofessionals, substitute teachers, as well as instructional supplies, though that is much, a much smaller amount than our personnel costs. It also includes instructional aides such as, aides, excuse me, such as our textbooks, our computer software, activities like field trips and athletics, as well as tuition paid to private institutions, generally for our special education students. Non-instructional expenses include plant operations. Plant is their word for our buildings, our facilities, each location or site. And so all of the costs associated with that, including repairs, utilities, and things of that nature. Student support includes counselors, nurses, speech and language pathologists, as well as other therapists. And then our instructional support include expenditures for things like our curriculum director and, and other parts of the administration related to curriculum, special education director, any master-type teachers that we have and librarians. These words are from the Auditor General's report. Food service is another area for non-instructional expenditures and then transportation as well. This chart reflects our $23, $24 per pupil. And the first column of each of these includes the PVUSD expenditure. The classroom dollars, that first one shows instruction only. So that was our 54 percent, excuse me, 57 percent amount. And that increased from last year by $361 per pupil. So more money going to instruction. The next section there is the classroom dollars that is instruction as well as student support and instructional support, those other two items I, I mentioned. And in our district, we spent $363 more per pupil in fiscal year '24 than in fiscal year '23. And then finally, administrative costs. We spent $903 per pupil in fiscal year '24. That's actually $51 less per pupil than fiscal year '23. And you'll see for all of those, for the classroom dollars, the instruction part and the student and instructional support pieces, we are higher than our peer average and higher than our state average in both of those areas. And then for administrative costs, we are lower than our peer average and lower than the state average. When we bring in the national average, you'll see the note below that it's from the U.S. Census Bureau information from 2022. That's the most recent data that we have, the per-pupil data for. And clearly, we're below the national average. But as a whole, our state is below the national average. And that's a reflection of the amount that we receive per pupil. If we don't receive that amount per pupil, we can't spend that amount per pupil. This chart shows the average teacher salary, with the portion in purple being from all other funds and then the portion in gray being from classroom site fund. And you can see that black line is the state average. We had been trending along that line, have dipped a little bit below that. I have not heard any other school districts who are giving the equivalent of approximately 3-plus percent when you include classroom site fund for teachers for next year. So I suspect when we see this report for fiscal year '26, which is next fiscal year, that we'll have caught back up or maybe exceed the state average there, is the hope. Then when we compare to most of our peer districts, we have peer districts in the classroom spending report. I don't put all of them on here because some of them are out of the valley area and some of them have, oh, Dr. Reynolds, help me out. The money that Phoenix Union has.
DSEG.
DSEG money, thank you. Sorry, just quizzing you. Yeah, you did great. You passed, A++. We don't have DSEG money. And so that can skew sometimes our information. We do have Phoenix Union on here just because they are here in the valley. But note that oftentimes, their money per pupil is far more than, than other districts that don't have those funds. But you can see the comparison between fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 for instructional spending. That's 0.6 percent higher for us. You see that many other districts actually went a little bit lower than they had the prior year. But Pure Unified also increased their percentage. And in this one, we are just behind Deer Valley in our instructional spending as a percentage of our total expenditures. When we bring in the instructional support and student support pieces, we are at 74.4 percent, is exactly the same as last year. And we see some districts have increased in that area, decreased in that area. But still, by almost a full percentage point, we are higher than the next district in terms of our total classroom spending. With administrative spending comparing from year to year, we decreased from 7.9 percent as a total to 7.2 percent of the total. And that is a slight decrease of 0.7 percent. A little mix of both from the other districts. But you can certainly see. little mix of both from the other districts, but you can certainly see that we are below our peer districts by the next closest one being a percent higher than us in, in administrative spending. And then finally, we do a cost comparison to our surrounding charter schools on here. The most recent data I have is from 2022, '23, but I've left 21, '22 on here. And you can see that the average spending for administration costs is 17.7% for charter schools. So school districts have a much lower spending percentage on administration. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Berg. Does any board member have any questions regarding this report? Yes, no? You answered all our questions.
Excellent.
Here, thank you for that very comprehensive report, and thank you for, everybody for helping us with those numbers up. You know, the, I, I know we are constantly hearing that schools and districts overspend on administration, and it's lovely to see, when you look at the numbers, that that isn't true. And even more so that this district has, has decreased our, our admin spending, and has been able to increase our instructional, so, our classroom spending. Before we adjourn, I'd like to remind you that the next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, May 1, at 6:30. Mrs. Christiansen, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. We are adjourned.